Alright, can I have everyone's attention please? Can I see a show of hands? Who thinks we should start this meeting?
Yay!
Okay, we'll do it. Well, good evening everyone and welcome to the... Welcome to the regular meeting, the May regular meeting of the Hoboken Board of Education. Mr. Moffett?
Yes, I'll read the statement of compliance. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of this meeting was published in the local papers on May 6, 2017, and May 7, 2017. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is a violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television channel 77 and Fios channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the District homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I have a volunteer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance before we start? Please, why don't you stand up and... Everyone, please rise. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Moffett, can you do the roll call?
Yes, sir. Ms. Angley?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Mr. McNamara?
Here.
Ms. Montgomery?
Here.
Ms. Soboloff?
Here.
And Mr. Cufffeld?
Here.
First order of business at our regular meetings is the recognition of Students of the Month, and I turn that over to Mr. Fitzhugh.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Joseph F. Brandt Student of the Month, Mela Gregory. Mela's in grade kindergarten at the Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School, and she was nominated by Ms. Brunt and Ms. Bernstein. She exhibits excellent attendance, has a positive attitude, and embodies all the qualities of a Brandt buddy. Her favorite quote, I'm sorry, the quote of her favorite adult at the building states, "Her friendly smile brightens up our hallways every day," and Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez, building principal, stated as such. Student achievements: Mela has made great strides in reading, writing, and mathematics. She works well independently and with her peers. She always tries her best and works hard on all of her assignments. She is very well attentive to all of her work and making sure it is done neatly and correctly. She arrives at school on time and has excellent attendance, and she serves as a role model for her peers in her class as well as for the students around the school. She's a true bucket filler. She's an absolute pleasure to have in class. Mela's favorite color is gold, and her favorite food is pizza. When she grows up, she would love to be a ballerina teacher. To get ready for her future, she spends her time teaching her baby sister Harley how to do things. The current objective is how to roll over independently. At this time, let's give Mela a big round of applause for her achievement for the Student of the Month honor. You're welcome. The Collabor Student of the Month is Kai Holstrom.
Are you excited?
Yeah.
So are we. So are we.
Mrs. Zayas, your grade six teacher quotes that Kai has been a participant of the Gift and Talented Program at Collabor. Kai loves to draw and explore. Kai enjoys traveling to different countries and visiting major landmarks. In the future, Kai wants to become an animator and travel around the world. And believe in yourself and you will be the world. That is a great quote. Dr. Vespinani, your building principal, states that you are well deserving of this recognition as Student of the Month. His commitment to academics is evident each day, and he serves as a tremendous role model for his peers. And your quote, "Education is a passport to the future; for tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today." Kai is an outstanding student who is always striving to better. He's an amazing role model for his class. He's also caring, trustworthy, considerate, thoughtful, and always willing to help any of his classmates. I have no doubt that Kai will achieve great things in his life. It is Miss Zayas and your classmates' honor to celebrate you as the District Student of the Month here for April 2017. At this time, let's give Kai a big round of applause. The Thomas G. Connors Elementary School Student of the Month, Amelia Pizarro. Ms. Vayland nominated the Connors Student of the Month, Amelia Pizarro. Her nomination of her fourth-grade student was in celebration of her improved effort in her schoolwork and classroom participation. Amelia has worked hard and made the honor roll for the first and second marking periods this school year. Helen Keller once stated, "Optimism is the faith that leads to major achievement. Nothing can be done without hope and confidence." Amelia is able to achieve through hard work, faith, and perseverance. She takes pride in her work and gets along with her peers. She enjoys playing football, drawing, using her scooter, and singing. Her favorite subject at Connors is art. When she is not busy doing her homework, she enjoys watching Five Nights at Freddy's series. Have to check that out. I don't know about that. We'll talk about that later. When Amelia grows up, she wants to break down barriers and become a football player. Amelia shared that being Student of the Month makes her very happy and glad. Dr. Pollins, your building principal, is very proud of you, and she's excited for you to be the Student of the Month at Connors Elementary for April. She states that Amelia has been working very hard and has made academic strides, and she loves that you try your best every day in Room 310. She states that success is no accident, it is hard work, perseverance, learning, studying, sacrifice, and most of all, love of what you do or learning to do. Amelia loves Connors and Connors loves Amelia. Amelia has a beautiful smile and spirit that brightens up a room. She's a joy to be around and has taken part in the walking school bus. With that being said, let's give Amelia a big round of applause for being the District Student of the Month representative from Thomas G. Connors Elementary. The Wallace Student of the Month recipient is Angel Acosta. Wallace Elementary School is proud to recognize Angel Acosta, a fifth-grade student as a Student of the Month for April 2017. Okay, we'll stand right here. Angel was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Martinez, because he is a responsible, cooperative, and kind-hearted young man. Angel has earned his honorable position for three marking periods in a row and is always striving to grow intellectually. Mrs. Martinez would say of Angel what she believes in every student, "Give a student wings to fly and watch them soar." According to Principal Shannon, Angel is a great young man. He is a role model for his peers and an asset to our school community. He is a leader in the classroom and on the playground. His respect for everyone he encounters during the course of the school day is tremendous. Angel is an eloquent speaker and offers in-depth arguments during collaborative conversations in class. One incredible moment was during a weekly classroom debate. The teams needed to have their written materials ready to participate in the debate, and unfortunately, Angel left his documentation home. But rather than fail his team, he held himself confidently during his counter-arguments and successfully represented his team and gained their respect and admiration. That is really awesome. Angel is considered an integral part of his classroom community, especially because his class participation stimulates the classroom's learning environment. Yet, as important, he is sensitive to the feelings of others, which makes him a peacekeeper amongst his peers. Angel's hobbies include dancing and playing basketball, and his favorite subjects are mathematics and physical education. He loves basketball and baseball, though he has not decided what college he wants to go to, but he aspires to be either an inventor or a professional basketball player. Regarding the receiving the title of Student of the Month, Angel stated, "I am very honored to be the Student of the Month for April and very proud of myself. I am very happy that I have been in Wallace since pre-K and happy to receive this award." You're a fine young gentleman, and congratulations to you on this distinguishable honor. Let's give Angel a big round of applause. Hoboken Middle School District Student of the Month, Antonio Ciosi. Antonio, nominated by Ms. Gennarelli, is an exceptional student. He does well in all of his classes but excels at mathematics, which is also his favorite subjects. Antonio is always on task and not shy to volunteer. He is admired by his peers for his mathematical prowess and his model behavior. Antonio goes above and beyond in the classroom and takes pride in his work. Antonio has one of the highest averages in the entire seventh grade. He is eager to learn and likes to be challenged, and he comes prepared to learn every single day and has a great positive attitude. He is a distinguishable representative of the Hoboken Middle School and is very deserving of the title of Student of the Month. Antonio loves to play soccer and is looking forward to playing for the Hoboken Red Wings Soccer Team when he enters high school in two years. In his free time, he hangs out with his friends and loves going to the park. Over the summer, he is looking forward to going to the beach for family vacation. Antonio is grateful for his family, especially his mom and his dad, from whom he attributes his great mathematical skills, according to Antonio, and a little more from his mom because she's really great at math. Let's give Antonio a big round of applause for his great honor this evening and beyond. The Hoboken High School, April 2017 Student of the Month recipient, Alyssa Nataro. Nominated by Chef Nelson, Chef Nelson stated that Alyssa is a valuable member of the yearbook staff. She single-handedly finished half of her yearbook design. What are you working on?
I designed the yearbook for, because there was only two people in the yearbook club.
Great. I can't wait to see you. In class, she is motivated, focused, and is a leader. She's always there to help students and makes the school a better place. Principal Piquetra stated, "When she thinks of Alyssa, she thinks of a quiet and reserved young lady. Really, she's a powerhouse and an excellent student who contributes to our school community. She speaks through her writing, as she is part of the school newspaper and the yearbook committee." She has come to know, I'm sorry, I have known to come, known to have known her more than a senior, but I can tell she is a good friend. She was here just last month supporting her friend as she received the honor of Student of the Month. I am confident that Alyssa will excel at university and continues to contribute through her writing. Alyssa is a senior and has been accepted at St. Peter's University, Caldwell College, University of Bridgeport, and others, but has chosen to attend St. Peter's University in the fall 2017. Let's give Alyssa a big round of applause just for that great honor. When Alyssa is not in school, she enjoys to spend time with her family and friends. When notified about this award, Alyssa stated, "I was surprised, and she would like to thank Ms. Melinda for always believing in her." Again, Alyssa, we're so very proud of all of your attributes and all of your contributions to the Hoboken High School family, and again, good luck on all your future endeavors. We have a special presentation this evening, and Mrs. Arno is going to work alongside of me this evening to present some special awards to a great group of fourth-grade students from Wallace Elementary. Are you Stoke guys? Are you excited? Okay. This evening, Dr. Johnson and I are presenting certificates of outstanding performance to Mrs. Arno's fourth-grade students for achieving first place at the Hudson County Mini Mock Trial Competition on April 27, 2017. The Mini Mock Trial program is aimed at introducing students to the legal system in a fun and positive manner. It is also designed to help students increase basic life and leadership skills such as listening, speaking, writing, and analyzing. The program aims to promote oral advocacy and public speaking skills, which students can utilize in the future, no matter what they want to be when they grow up. The program also sought to bring law to life for students through active participation for and participation in the competitions. Mrs. Arno assigned the various character roles to students, for example, the role of attorney for the plaintiff in prosecution, as well as jury, a court clerk, and a judge, to name a few. The students reenacted Goldie Lox versus the Three Bears. The students also had to memorize their lines and add personality into their character roles and traits. The students had such a wonderful time with the process, and through this hard work, our parents also participated in varying ways to make the program an astounding success. At this time, Mrs. Arno and I would like to present each student with his or her name on their certificate of outstanding participation. So students, when Mrs. Arno calls your name, you're going to come up to the podium and we're going to present you with this great award. Are you guys ready? Let's give them a big round of applause to get them ready, okay?
Ready? Jaden Altamira. Tariyan Anderson. Miles Angley. Luke Baca. Dia Bavishi. Isabella Ciosi. Jayla Dell. Haley Dobson. Brianna Frias. Daniel Heiduk. Ace Levine. Zoe Magalletta. Ariana McNulty. Ava Pellicchio Manfredi. Evan Perez. Trey Tagliari. Savva Toman. Mackai Torres. Madison Walia Peters. Morgan Walia Peters.
Special congratulations again to Mrs. Arno's fourth-grade class on a job well done. Each of you exemplify the true essence of teamwork and dedication throughout the process. E-Su knew his or her lines to perfection, and we are so very proud of each and every single one of you. At this time, let's rise and give our students a big round of applause on all of their distinguishable honors.
At this time, Trey is going to give us a little piece of his lines from, Trey was the attorney for the Bears.
Your honor and members of the jury, we have shown that the defendant, Goldie Lox, without being invited, opened the door to the Bears' home, walked into the kitchen, ate the porridge, and broke Baby Bear's bed. The defendant did all of these things without being invited, and that certainly meets a test for trespassing and entering and destruction of property. Even though Goldie Lox knew better, that is no excuse. Now Goldie Lox is trying to blame someone else for eating the porridge and breaking the chair, but the evidence has shown that there was only one person who could have opened the door to the Bears' home, walked into the kitchen, ate the porridge, and broke Baby Bear's bed. The defendant did all of these things without being invited. Based on the evidence, we ask you, the jury, to find Goldie Lox guilty of all charges. Thank you.
At this time, we're just going to have an opportunity to have parents come up to the front to have pictures with Mrs. Arno with their children, so parents, if you'd like to come up to the front, that'd be fantastic.
Just bear with us one more minute. We have one more recognition we'd like to do.
We have one last presentation this evening. At this time, I would ask that Gabriel Panero, I know you're doing the camera, but I need you to come up for just a moment. And Anthony Sessa? He's not here? Okay. Let's give them both a big round of applause this evening. On April 26, two media production students, Gabriel Panero and Anthony Sessa, won the grand prize for their public service announcement. The contest was sponsored by the Hudson County Coalition for Drug-Free Community. Sessa and Panero were asked by their media production teacher, Mr. McCarley, and the school substance abuse coordinator, Ms. Gina Matera, to create a PSA that discourages young adults from drinking alcohol. Both students wrote a screenplay and during PGP and after-school produced and edited their 32nd commercial. The commercial was completed in January, and on April 25, the school and filmmakers were contacted with the news of their success. The Coalition Coordinator, Ms. Karius, said, "Our members found their PSA to be the most creative of them and really enjoyed it." She also told the two students, "Some of the judges couldn't believe the commercials produced by two high school students." Ms. Matera responded- Ms. Matera responded, "I am so grateful for the hard work of our students." At this time, let's give our two students a big round of applause for this great prestigious honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzhugh. On behalf of the board, congratulations to all the students on their recognitions and their achievements, and to their families. I know that none alone. Anybody have any comments? John?
I wanted to congratulate all the students recognized tonight for the 4th grade. I know they really worked together hard as a team, so it was a real team effort and a team accomplishment. And I also wanted to thank Mrs. Arnone for a lot of really hard work. She made this a really rewarding experience for the kids, but also one that was really fun. And thank you so much for that. And I just have one question for the commercial. Is that something that we can put on our website and everyone can look at it? Okay. That'd be great.
All right, we're going to take a couple-minute recess before we resume the meeting or continue the meeting with the business part.
I just wanted to ask if the parents could remember the following. My calculation is that these youngsters will be getting out of law school in about 15 years. We're certainly going to be hiring men, so please don't forget to contact us. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
This is Mr. Vito Gagliardi. So, we're going to take a couple-minute recess before we continue with the agenda, the business part of the meeting. So, if students and family want to take any pictures, but you're also invited to go home and do your homework tonight. Shall we try to resume? All right, we're going to resume the meeting now. So, board members and public know, I've been asked by our attorney, we're going to go into an executive session at the very end of the meeting. It's just for information only on some issue. There will be no issue, no action taken afterwards. So, we'll get through the meeting. We'll have a five-minute executive session, and then we'll have to come back just to close the meeting, but there will be no voting or no action taken. So, we now move to the administrators' reports and the committee reports. Dr. Johnson, do you have more?
My report consists this evening of congratulating the students on their accomplishments, Students of the Month, those students that participated in the film production, public service announcement, and also the 4th grade children that participated in the Hudson County mini mock trial. In addition to that, the only other item that I have on the superintendent's report today is an update regarding our CUSAC review visit this morning. We had visitors from the Hudson County office here throughout the day, probably until 3:00, giving us kind of a rundown of our current CUSAC, which is a monitoring process for the Department of Education that we go through every few years, a rundown of our performance from a quantitative standpoint in multiple areas. Today's focus was only in one area, and that was instruction and program. Actually, going to leave the overview of the day to Mr. Klupfeld and also Sharon Angley just to give a little bit of their feedback on the day. We presented to the Hudson County Executive Superintendent of Schools. We also presented to the Hudson County Educational Specialist. Basically, all of the initiatives that we have in the district right now to address and to enhance and improve everything that we're doing in the area of curricular development, program initiation, and also instruction. We presented everything from our lesson plan design to our administrative review of lesson planning. We presented information regarding curricular development. We presented information on professional learning communities. And we also presented information on instructional strategies and new program developments that we have had implemented in the district over the last two years. It was a really interesting process. Our presentation, once we receive the final review in writing, we will do a formalized presentation, but I think if your board colleagues can just give a little bit of an overview of not only the experience, but also the feedback that we received today, I think it would be really helpful and a nice holdover until we receive a formalized report.
Right, so the two people from the county, state, Mr. Joe Zara and Dr. Joe Ramos, experienced long-term educators, former superintendents in their careers, school principals. They knew what they were looking for, I get the impression, and they were not going to be hoodwinked by any means. They asked very pointed questions. I was thrilled to be there for three hours. That went by rather quickly. And they did pursue all sorts of questions about lesson plans, about professional development, even down to a concern about the social and emotional care of children, not just the academics, although the academics, of course, was their main focus. So, it was like, you know, what are you doing about this? And what are you doing about this? And what are you doing about this? And what are you doing about that? And at the meeting, of course, it was Dr. Johnson, Mr. Fitzhugh, some other, Robin, Ms. Piqueira, Dr. Vespaniani, Ms. Sandra Rodriguez. So, we had a cross-section representation of administrators, and it was thrilling as a board member to just hear in detail. I mean, sometimes we don't get that detail, some of us on the curriculum committees, but the extensive work that is going on in this district all the time that you don't always see. I mean, the results are here when we, you know, applaud the children, but the exhaustive work that is done, not just by the administrators, but by the teachers every single day, every single night on behalf of the kids. So, it filled me with a lot of pride and an appreciation for the work that's going on by the administrators and the staff in this district. Ms. Angley?
Yeah, I felt the same way. I was really happy to participate today and hear all of the initiatives and great things going on in the district all at the same time. I think that was helpful because we hear things from one meeting to another, but to see it all in a presentation, I thought the two individuals from the county and state were extremely happy with what they heard. And one comment that came up was, it's, you know, it would be great for the community to be able to hear all of this because I think people would be really wowed to hear about all of the great things that are going on. So, yeah, I was really thrilled to be there.
In particular, Dr. Ramos will be doing school tours tomorrow. That's not a surprise, but it is... He'll be looking at things. He'll be looking in the classrooms. He'll be looking in the hallways for indicators that what he was hearing today was just not talk, you know, that the programs are being implemented. The writings on the wall, the classroom presentation, the teachers, the lesson plans are all there. So, it's almost like the, you know, the general doing the inspection of the barracks. You know, he'll be checking the door cells for, you know, all the details that are critical to good education. And I was... He seemed to, I think he had been most recently more intimate with the Connors School. He had visited that most recently. So, he's anxious to see the other schools as well tomorrow, but he was so complimentary about the work that he had seen at Connors, and he said, "I would put that school up against any school in this city in terms of the educational curriculum, the professional staff, and the education that's happening there." So, he said, you know, if the other schools live up to that, he seemed like he was ready to be impressed. So, I was particularly thrilled by that remark.
So, in closing, in terms of CUSAC, once we receive the final report, we will do a presentation just like we did today at a public board meeting. We'll introduce components of the presentation in committee and then do the full presentation. We are given a certain amount of individuals in different categories. We were allowed to have two Board of Education members present, so we had our Board of Education President and Vice President present with us today. In addition to the presentation, it's interesting, Dr. Ramos talked about, you know, presenting information like this to the community because we are in the process of hopefully arranging a meeting with the PTO representatives from each of the schools through an interesting request by Ms. Quach and also another parent in the district regarding the possibility of having a state-of-the-district presentation to be able to kind of roll out all of these initiatives and the progress that we've made in the very near future. So, I actually spoke to Dr. Ramos about this after the meeting as well. So, it seems like what's nice is we have two worlds that are going to be coming together to be able to present that information. So, I look forward to the opportunity to present out the narrative on CUSAC. You've already seen the scores. These are the CUSAC scores that were presented in November, and then what ends up happening is they come back a couple of months later, and they give us the opportunity to talk to those scores. Again, the one major issue that we have with New Jersey CUSAC right now, that process, is that the instruction and program results are still based on the 2013-2014 assessment scores, and that representatives from the Department of Education kind of echoed our concern that, you know, there seems to be enough data now with PARC that they should be transitioning, but it looks like it's not going to be until 2018-2019 until they change the battery of test scores that they're going to be using. So, we actually will go through one more CUSAC cycle next year using the same 2013-2014 test scores. Seems a little bit counterproductive, but at the same time, everybody is in the same boat. 2013-2014 are the assessment scores that are used. So, with that being said, we will do a full presentation. I expect to receive a report sometime in mid-July from the Department of Ed.
Great, thank you. Mr. Moffett, do you have a report today?
Just one quick item, just to update the board. We discussed this at our finance committee, meaning tonight you do not see financial reports listed on the finance portion of the agenda. The update is that I am currently in receipt of the reports, and they're under review in my office. If anyone would like to inspect them from the board, feel free. Like I said, they're on file in my office. I'm reviewing them currently, and you should expect it in our first regular meeting in June. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, I'll move on to committee reports. The first committee is the Communications Committee. Ms. Delar?
Sure. The Communications Committee met on May 5th at 1:00. In attendance were Superintendent Dr. Johnson, Irene Sobolov, and myself. Discussed were, that we are very excited to share with you, the Hoboken Public School District has won the National School... It's very long, so bear with me. The National School Public Relations Association Communications Award. This year, there were about 50 submissions from 35 different school districts. The award ceremony is going to be held on June 1st. During the ceremony, we will find out which award we received. What that means is that we have won, and we've won either first, second, or third place. We don't know which one yet, so we will find out during the ceremony. So, we're very excited to share that news with you. The new district mobile app has been sent officially to the App Store, so in a couple of weeks, it will be up and running, and you... Our district families will be getting notifications on when it's up and it's ready to be used. Just as a reminder, this is an app that is free, and it is compatible with all phones. It's an app that you can have on your phone, and you can have, you know, the district calendar. You can go in there for each different school, which is a lot easier to just go into one place and look up everything that's going on in your particular school. The new 9-12th grade curriculum and course listing is now up on our district website, so if you have time, go and check that out. It's divided by different links, different course listings, and it has a really wonderful description of what we offer from 9 to 12. The K through 6 and the 7 through 8 curriculum is being worked on, so that should be up in the next couple of weeks. And then last is the Hoboken High School and Middle School will host a five-day cyber patriots cyber camp program that will teach students skills in cyber safety and cybersecurity. So, five days, and then on the fifth day, there will be a mini competition to see which team scores the most points in detecting and securing computer security vulnerabilities. So, that's happening at the Hoboken High School and Middle School, and that is all.
Thank you. Curriculum Committee, Ms. Sobolov.
The Curriculum Committee met on Wednesday, May 3rd at 1:30. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Klupfeld, Ms. Evans, Ms. Delar, and myself. The items discussed, one of them was the Global Day of Design. Students participated in the International Day of Design, intended to inspire students around the world to create, make, and build. Over 40,000 students from 450 schools on four continents participate. Great appropriate projects and design challenges are provided to participating schools, and the students and staff really enjoyed the experience. The one note that they had was, due to the project Lead the Way, some of the students were already sort of beyond the grade that was indicated for our students, so next year the thought is to maybe shift the grades up for the student projects. We discussed the mini mock trial. We saw that they won the first place. That was awesome. Congrats to them. And the district is looking into expanding that activity for all elementary 4th grade classes because that one was so successful. We discussed the Junior Model UN. The district has been invited to participate in the Bergen County Model UN program, so approximately 40 5th and 6th graders from all the elementary schools will participate. The Junior Model UN is a middle school program providing students with an opportunity to learn more about international relations and diplomacy. The program ends with a full day, I think it's 8 to 5 event in Bergen County with students from a variety of other schools around the region. There was a recently-held girls' dinner at Connors. It was a girls' impairment dinner for 4th, 5th, and 6th grade girls. It was very well attended by the Connors students and staff, and there were guest speakers including Dr. Johnson and Assemblywoman Shapiro. Moving forward, a boys' dinner is being planned at Connors as well as we're exploring having a girls' dinner and a separate boys' dinner with all the district elementary schools, students coming together from 4th, 5th, and 6th grade. Passport to Learning, the after-school program, was discussed, and the new registration has begun, and it's still available online. There's a few differences. The classes are on a semester basis, and a student can take classes Monday and Wednesday or Thursday and Friday, the enrichment classes, and/or sign up for a Fun Friday. And then there's three different pickup times available. The fees for the one semester are $150 for one class or $350 for all five days for the entire semester. Students at Connors School attend free of charge, any student at Connors, thanks to the Family Friendly Grant. The new middle school Passport to Learning program, which is being developed when we move the middle school here, will include intramural athletics, academic support, enrichment classes, and dinner, and some of the possible offerings will include Citizens in Action Theater, Golf, Basketball, Lacrosse, and Cyber Patriots, among others. The Gift and Talita program was discussed. A parent meeting is being planned to outline all the criteria and testing and all the offerings, and also discussing the John Topmans program. And then the new high school program of studies that we had mentioned previously was being revamped. was being revamped, that is now complete and will be available online soon. And that will include course descriptions, grading scales, information on the honors, academy dual enrollment, and a listing in the criteria for the student certifications that are available to our students. And then we had discussed a little bit about the CUSAC, which you just heard about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Facilities will be next. Mr. Madigan?
We held the Facilities Committee meeting last Tuesday, May 2nd. In attendance were Sharon Angley, Tom Kluffeld, Irene Sobolov, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, and myself. It was a short meeting. We have a lot of things on wait, but I'll go through them. We talked about the middle school relocation updating plan, and the school districts waiting here from the New Jersey SDA, and they were having a call last Thursday with them. So we'll find out on our next committee what's going on with that. But moving, stadium bathroom work is still moving forward. They put in the tiles already. They were installing the stalls, I think, this week, the bathroom stalls, so that's moving along. And our capital planning for the summer is still moving along, but we're waiting on tonight's budget if it passes or fails. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Madigan. E F G, Finance. Ms. Angley?
The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, May 3rd at 7:30. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Biancomano, Mr. Kluffeld, Mr. McNamara, and myself. The committee reviewed all May agenda items and recommend all for board approval. We'd like to thank our donors that are supporting the Rockin' Red Wings trip to the National Memorial Day Parade in Washington, DC. The committee discussed the food service program. Our March lunch and evening profits were about $6,000. Our full-year projection at this time is about $24,000. We continue to talk about the unpaid lunch balance, which seems to grow every month. The administration has identified all families or accounts that are delinquent by over $100 and have sent letters out to those individuals. So we urge, if you've received a letter, please pay your balance. We also discussed the selection process for a labor negotiator. We have upcoming contract negotiations, and the Finance Committee will interview, you know, the applicants. We discussed the 2017 and 2018 budget. As you know, last week, Mr. Moffett and Dr. Johnson presented the proposed budget to the community, and tonight, we will be voting on that. That's it.
Thank you. Finally, Governance and Personnel, Ms. Evans?
The Governance and Personnel Committee met on May 3rd from 6:00 to 7:30. In attendance were Ms. Sobolov, Mr. Kluffeld, Dr. Johnson, and myself. We reviewed all agenda items for tonight and recommend all for approval. I just wanted to mention a few of the items. Item 9.07, Assemblies and Presentations. Michael Fallon will be returning to the high school this fall. He gives a performance that is aimed at increasing empathy, reducing bullying, and preventing suicide. He's performed at the high school before, and it's a really popular show, so we expect that to be the same again. The performance is funded by our grant program. Item 9.10, we're approving another volunteer for Peter Pan, the upcoming district musical. We'd like to thank her for her support of the show and the students. And just a reminder to everyone that the show is coming up soon. It's May 19th, 20th, and 21st. And finally, items 9.14 through 9.22. At last week's meeting, the board approved the tenure teachers and administrators for the upcoming school year, and this is something that the state requires that we do every year at this time. And tonight, these items reflect that we're approving all the other staff that will be returning in the fall. And again, this is something that the state requires that we do this time of year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I was going to comment on the CUSAC review as part of my own report, but I have already done that. So we will move to public comments on the agenda items. Are there any speakers signed up? It's got to be a better way to do this. I can move it like online.
I have no speakers listed either.
Then, next item is to vote on, ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Sobolov made the motion, and Ms. Evans gave the second.
Seven seconds for consent? I got that, sir.
Is there any discussion? That we can call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, on all, but abstain on item 10.02, abstain on check number 54775 and check number 54923. Yes on everything else.
Mr. Madigan?
Okay, 6.01, the minutes, no. And everything, is this included in the budget?
Yes, it's on the agenda.
Okay, then I can speak about it right now?
Please.
All right. Well, I spoke to Ms. Angley, she's the head of Finance, and she knows I'm troubled with the budget issue. And there's different parts of it. It's the state, it's also the district I have a problem with. The state, their funding-wise hurts us. We have more students than the three charter schools together, and we don't get as much as the three put together. That's my first part. Then my second part is with the district in finance, especially, a couple of months ago, I spoke out about this. We hired an employee, and we didn't go by the steps. And we, to me, that's part of our problem of overpaying when we didn't have to. It's a step issue. Why do we have the steps? Why do you go into contracts and have these steps? So when we come up and we have to raise taxes or say it has to go up, and part of our portion that went up is salaries, benefits, also. So that makes me upset. And then when we speak about it, well, if you don't vote for it, you're going to hurt our children. That is true. But then, as a board, we must step up when we're being told just to give somebody a higher raise than we have to, higher money than we have to. I don't want to end up like these other school districts around the state that are laying off last week, teachers, bus drivers, aides, that their taxes are going to go up, and nobody knows. In Hudson County, in one school district, nobody knows where these millions of dollars went in a school district. I don't want to be caught with this. It's our responsibility to the students, to also the taxpayers. And we don't look out every time, I feel, and this is my opinion. So when we look, that I'm going to hurt the children if I vote no, and hurt the taxpayers if I vote yes, but we have to think during the year, when we vote on contracts or we vote on employees that are coming in the district new, and we don't follow the steps, then we come down to today, and then you're a bad person if you vote against the budget. So it makes me sick that we have to do this every year. And I was mad last year, and I voted no. But with the two parts of the state and ourselves, I'm going to vote yes on it, but I am annoyed about it. And I hope my fellow board members during the year take this into account. When it comes up with contracts or higher salaries than the steps we're allowed to give, I want you to remember this for next year's contract, because if we have to, for next year's budget, if we have to raise taxes again, don't turn around and say we're going to hurt the students when you, when we also are part of that problem. We didn't make the totally, but we have a bit in it by giving higher salaries, that's on us, okay? I understand the state is hurting us with their, with their part of this, but we also have to do our job also. So with that, everything else, yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
I'd like to say something on 10.5. So many factors weigh my decision tonight. First and foremost, the students at all the schools in the district, the teachers, administration, community, and taxpayers. I feel this year's budget highlights true academic growth opportunities for our growing student population and our teachers. Clear examples of this change is the development of a separate middle school, which is near and dear to my heart as a former middle school teacher. So it is a big decision. It's something I don't take lightly, but with all the amazing highlights that we've seen this year's budget, I can vote very firmly yes on all.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes, and I just wanted to make a quick comment. I wanted to thank the administration for working so hard, and the business administrator, and I think also giving the board members the opportunity. When I first got on the board, it was mostly coming out of the Finance Committee, but here, everybody has an opportunity to discuss and question and bring things to the table. And the budget, I feel, supported a lot of the new initiatives in our district and growth in the other districts, so I'm, absolutely, yes. Oh, I have to, yes, and on 10.02, I need to abstain, yes on everything else, and abstain on check number 54775 and 54923. And then yes on everything else.
Thank you. I skipped over Mr. McNamara. My apologies.
One quick comment also on 10.05. Having sat through this now for the first time, just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Moffett and Dr. Johnson for all the effort put into the budget cycle, and to everyone on the Finance Committee for all the rigorous work we put in. I do appreciate all of the new initiatives, but as I mentioned last week, I want to make sure that we stay focused on the fundamentals as well, that those continue to improve, particularly in the area of technology, which is near and dear to my heart. Food service, which I think we need to continue to increase the quality and the offerings, as well as gifted education, and not just offer virtual classroom, online courses, but additional in-classroom opportunities as well. With that being said, I vote yes on everything, except I abstain on 6.01 because I wasn't at that meeting.
True.
And Mr. Kluffeld?
I did hear anecdotally, by the way, to echo something Mr. McNamara just said, a comment from someone who had seen the budget presentation, I guess, on our public access channel, had said, I'd heard that they learned a lot about school funding and about how this district works. So I would echo the good work that you did. We learn more and more and more, and I think it's important to be transparent with the public and with the board. I will vote yes, but must abstain on 10.02, checks number 54775 and 54923. Just so you know, we're not playing games. There's two checks that are written to the law firm that is providing legal counsel for the three board members on the indemnification issue, so that's why we must do that. Did it pass?
Yes.
It passed. There were no speakers on the...
That's correct. There are no speakers.
Okay. Then we're going to go into executive session.
The purpose is a matter of attorney-client privilege, and the estimated time is five minutes.
So we'll be back shortly. There will be no, there will be no action taken, but we will return in about five minutes. So a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we'll be back in five minutes. All right, we have a little bit of a procedural loop we have to do. We need a motion to come out of the executive session.
Motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we're back in session. Can I have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.